Hi, I'm David Plazas. I'm the Opinion Engagement Editor for The Tennessean. And I'm here with Amy Froeg, who's the incumbent for District 3 Nashville School Board. And we're talking about her run for reelection here in 2016. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
We appreciate it. And forgive me if I fiddle around here a little bit.
That's fine.
Just making sure the link is working.
That's fine.
So again, we appreciate everyone who's watching the broadcast. Tell us a little bit about yourself for those who may not know you, and also why you're running for reelection.
Okay. So first and foremost, I am running for a school board because I have a vested interest in the schools. I have two children who enrolled in our local zone schools out in Bellevue. I have a daughter who is going to be starting 7th grade at HG Hill Middle. And I have a son who is starting 4th grade at Gower Elementary. And I've been very actively involved in their schools since my daughter began. And when we, you know, were first considering where to enroll our children in schools, there was a lot of sort of negative talk about the public schools. And people warned us not to go to Gower. And we decided we were going to try it anyway. And so we did. And we ended up having a really wonderful experience there. But about a year into our time at Gower, the PTO died. And we ended up really with no parent support of the school, very limited community support. And a neighbor and I decided we would step up and be the PTO. And so we sat on my front porch and we drew straws. And that's how I ended up being PTO president. But the school, you know, had some challenges. It was a Title I school, had a very high population of special needs students, a lot of English learners. We had 23 different countries represented. And so on paper, it didn't necessarily look that good. But it's a wonderful school with great teachers, great leadership. So we set about trying to build support for our elementary school. And over the course of a year, we ended up forming about 15 new community partnerships with businesses and nonprofits. We dramatically increased parent engagement. We put in a natural landscape playground at the rear of the school. We put in a teaching garden so the children could go vegetables. And we did that in partnership with American Heart Association. Put in butterfly gardens and rain gardens. And we brought in therapy dogs for the youngest children. Started recycling program. A lot of, you know, big events. Started doing fun things at the school. And what came of our work there was, to me, very exciting and kind of a miraculous thing because five years later, the school developed a waitlist and the school's performance improved. And so I am a big believer in the power of parent and community engagement around our schools to improve outcomes for students. And I've seen it work, and that is why I ran the first time. I decided to run again because I really feel this is a time of great hope for our community. I feel that we are on the precipice of becoming a really high-performing district nationwide. And, you know, I've done a lot of work, talked a little bit about my passions on the school board. I've been a very big advocate of whole-child education, which simply means ensuring that we are educating the whole child through social, emotional focus. We should make sure that every child has access to a rich, broad curriculum, to art, to music, to time in nature, foreign language, physical activity, recess. I passed the first policy guaranteeing recess for all young children in our school system. I helped broaden the middle school curriculum by ensuring that every middle school offers foreign language. I've also been a proponent of community schools. Community schools are schools that partner with existing community resources to support students. So they provide wraparound services for students in need. They can do things like, you know, offer meals at night. They might have a washer and dryer in the school. But they also offer enrichment for the students. You know, the students can stay after school and have some of these great things like art or music or those types of experiences. But the idea is that the school becomes the hub of the community. It better engages parents. It strengthens the community, and it brings in outside resources to support the children. And then another area where I've worked is around the excessive standardized testing that's been happening. I think if you were to talk to most parents and probably most teachers, that would be the number one issue. We just have far too much testing going on. So I worked to reduce testing by, we eliminated testing for students in K through 2nd grade. So that's a little bit of the work that I've been doing the last four years. I have a lot of other areas where I'd like to continue my work. I'm interested in advancing the needs of gifted and advanced learners. I think we need to focus more on equity. And there's just a lot more work to be done, so that's why I'm running for a second term.
Good. And tell me a little about your impressions of Dr. Joseph and also the process of getting him hired.
Right. Well, I would think it was a very, as I said, it's a very hopeful time for us. I think everyone was impressed with Dr. Joseph, and we had an unanimous vote on the school board, which is unusual. So I think that speaks well of him. I was impressed with Dr. Joseph for a number of reasons. I think he's got the perfect demeanor for the job, and I think he is a calming influence for, you know, this discussion that we've been having in Nashville. But he is someone with a background as an educator. He started out in the classroom. He was a literacy coach. And so I think that he understands the needs of teachers well, understands the needs in the classroom. I think everyone has talked a little bit about his sense of urgency. I mean, we hired him on Friday, and I was very impressed. He was at work on Monday, even though he's not starting until today officially. So he came in ready to roll. I think he is going to quicken the speed at which we are working. But he's very interested in equity, and I think that is an area where we need to focus. We have, you know, our schools and our students, you know, they have varying needs throughout the city. And some of our students are being served very well, and others, you know, we have needs that are being unmet. And so I think that is something I'd like to focus on for a second term. He talked about the mission statement, or vision statement, I guess, from his current district where he's working, which I loved, and I think it's a direction that we could consider. But he talked about using data, or focusing on data, performance, and culture with a lens on literacy. And I think improving the culture in our schools would go a long way to improving the outcomes. So I think that is the right direction to go, and I think the school board's really excited about working with him.
Well, he had encouraged you all to read Leadership and Self-Deception for this retreat you had last weekend. Tell me a little bit about how that went and maybe some lessons learned from that reading.
Sure. Well, for one thing, I think it's a great book, but I think the training that we went through for a day and a half was really eye-opening and life-changing, I think, for many of us. We had a really positive retreat, and it makes me, you know, very hopeful about the work that we're starting to do. The book basically talks about being in the box, which means that we are acting, we are acting out of a sense of trying to justify our own beliefs or behaviors, and so that we do not have clarity about, you know, in judging what's happening around us. And I think the gist of the book, if I could try to distill it down to one sentence, is that while we may disagree, we must always approach others from, always approach discussions recognizing the humanity in others, which is really a profound statement. And I think that if we are able to do that, we're going to have much more productive conversations as a board and as a city. And we also talked a little bit about what happens when you've got two people in the box. And I think that's what's happening in some of these education discussions. You've got one person who is trying to justify his or her beliefs or behaviors, and then that person is reflecting another person who then gets in the box, and then you have collusion. So it's, you know, you're going round and round. And when you're able to step away and see people with, see others' humanity and sort of approach them openly and with really, I mean, a spiritual way of looking at things from a place of love, really, then we have clarity and we can see things, we can see things more clearly and see things more factually. And so we're not blocked by our own perceptions of what's happening. So I think, you know, this is certainly something that we're going to be working on as a district and as a board.
How do you see it affecting the way that the board was perceived in these last four years versus the way you'd like the board to be perceived in the next four years?
Yeah. Well, I just think it's a, this is a restart. You know, we've got Dr. Joseph here, and we've never done any retreat like that before. And I think that, you know, this is, it's a time for us to, we're self-reflecting, and I think it's a time for us to just restart some of these conversations more openly and, you know, without, without the block of being in a box.
Tell us a little bit about the process. It was a very intense process to actually get to a new director. This is the most important decision the board has to make.
Right.
And this is an opportunity also to discuss your own concerns about the search.
Right.
I know initially, I'd love to hear about that, yeah.
Sure. Okay. Well, so when we met as a board to set forth the process we wanted to follow, we made an agreement, everyone that was involved, including the Nashville Public Education Foundation, that only the board would select the candidates to interview. And so we had a candidate that I brought up along with Jill Spearing and Joanne Brannon, who had more experience than all of our candidates put together. This is somebody that had run three major urban school systems, African-American female, and we had no females on the slate. But I was primarily concerned about experience. So this person was on the list and then was removed from our list of candidates. And I did not know that she would have been the right fit for us, but I did feel strongly that she deserved an interview. And so I spoke with our search team, and I told them that I would go through the process of, you know, the initial, I believe it was initial interviews. And then if I still felt that we should interview this other candidate, that I would bring that candidate up for a vote. And so that's what I did. There was, there was a question, I guess, about whether I had followed the process, but the process we all agreed to was that the board would make the decision, not the search team. And I felt strongly that the board should make the decision, and after I brought it to a vote, the board decided not to interview her. But I do, I'm very happy with Dr. Joseph, and I think we've ended up with the right person at the right time and ready to move forward. But I think there was just some misunderstanding about our process and how that played out in this particular instance.
Very good. If there's one thing that you'd want to keep, that Metro Schools is doing right now that you'd like to continue doing, what would that be? The one thing that you're happiest about?
Okay. Well, I think we're doing a few things, right? But I think pre-K is something we're doing extremely well. We are partnering with Vanderbilt University to ensure that we're using best practices. We are focusing on developmentally appropriate practices for children. I would like to see our district engage more with the universities around the city. We have all these great, you know, teaching schools, and Vanderbilt is the number-one education program in the nation. And so I would love to be having a greater dialogue with these universities around us. But we are, you know, we're putting in place best practices in this program, and we are also monitoring them and making adjustments, monitoring our program and the results and trying to make adjustments. And that is how I think we should be approaching every initiative that we undertake. So...
And conversely, if there's one thing that if you by fiat could change, what would be something that you'd want to get rid of or alter?
Well, the, let me go, can I go back to what we're doing well?
Absolutely.
Because I've got a few words, I would have mentioned a few things.
Yeah, sure, sure.
I do think also that we've got, we are put, we've put in place the right initiatives. I think our focus is right now. We have a comprehensive literacy program, which I think is going to be effective. That's something we have struggled with as a district and the state has struggled with overall. We also have a focus on our English learners, and we have the largest percentage in the state. And then we are expanding our community schools program, and I talked a little bit about that earlier. But that is, it's vitally important that we are addressing the needs of the children who are coming to school, you know, needing extra support. So that's, okay, that's what we're doing well. Turning to what I think we could improve. I think the biggest issue in our district is the culture, and, which is one of the reasons I like Dr. Joseph. The, you know, for years, teachers are suffering from low morale. I think it is a problem that is very big in scope. It starts really at the national level, but also I think there's some things we could be doing as a district to improve the culture and improve teacher morale. Teachers feel right now that they really are not being heard, and they are fearful of voicing their concerns. So those of us on the board, we often hear from teachers who wish to remain anonymous. And we have to change that. We think, I think that our educators need to be driving the conversation around reform. And, but even if you look at the problem more broadly, we know that test scores and student achievement are primarily impacted by factors outside of the school. So, you know, there are decades of social science research that tell us that student achievement is impacted by 2/3 out-of-school factors and then by only 1/3 in-school factors. And teachers themselves are responsible for somewhere around 7% to 15%, 7% to 15% variance in test scores. So they have a small piece. They're the most important in-school factor, but really, we're dealing with these much broader societal issues. And so I was very excited to hear you all talking about mobility and poverty. You know, some of us, I've been talking about poverty and mobility and adverse childhood experiences for four years. And if we want to see real changes in our school system and not just be trying to put a Band-Aid on the problem, we're going to have to come together as a city to address some of these issues.
And I appreciate you coming to the forum the other day.
Yeah.
These things, I think, that you mentioned about culture goes to another conversation, which oftentimes we've been discussing with every school board candidate about, you know, how should we be approaching the debate about charter schools, if there is a debate at all?
Sure.
But how do you see it, and how would you like to move that discussion forward?
Well, first I will say that I came in four years ago without much of an opinion on charter schools. I looked at the research, which tells us that charter schools generally perform about the same as traditional schools. And so I really didn't understand why we were talking about charter schools so much. But I have come to have many concerns about charters. And to me, the charter school discussion is not about type of school, and it's not about the method of governance, you know, really, if we have a school that's working well, if we, we can use different types of governance models. But the charter school conversation, to me, is about equity and fairness. So we've had a few issues that we've tried to deal with over the last four years. The first big question that we finally had answered is whether charter schools are having a negative fiscal impact on the district as a whole. We had two independent studies that reached the same conclusion, which was that unabated charter growth does drain funds from the school system as a whole. And so that issue's been settled. The question is, you know, can we sustain more growth or not? Is there a need for that? And when we look at our numbers, there's really not parent demand for these schools right now. We have many more seats coming online than waitlists for the schools. There are very few children on the waitlist. And then the other issue is regulating the charter schools. We need to ensure that any school that is accepting our tax dollars is fully transparent, that we're able to monitor these schools. And I've been frustrated over the last four years because we, I really do not feel that these schools are regulated. For example, two years ago, I got a policy passed for fiscal transparency around charter schools. And really, there's no compliance with that policy two years later. And so what we did last year, which I think is the answer to this debate, is we passed the Annenberg standards into our policy. And the Annenberg standards are a set of standards developed by the Annenberg Institute. It's a highly revered education policy group. And basically, the Annenberg standards try to make sure that we're leveling the playing field. So they will make sure that charter schools aren't cherry-picking students, that we have fiscal transparency, that we are addressing disciplinary policies, and making sure that every school can succeed. Because if you have one set of schools, which in our case, charter schools are serving 10% of our students, that is draining funding from the 90% of students. Or you have one set of schools that is cherry-picking children and dumping off children, you know, that are more challenging or costly to educate, into the other schools, that's an equity problem. We have to have, every school has to have the resources they need to succeed. We need to have a balance in our schools, the types of students served, in order for everyone to move forward. So to me, that's the issue. It's about equity.
Who is the person you most admire, and why?
Okay. And I heard, I saw this question coming. So I have to say, before I worked at, before I served on the school board, I worked as a grant writer for Room in the End, which is the homeless program here. When it was started by Father Strobel, Charlie Strobel, and I had the honor to work with him. We have sort of a longstanding relationship with that organization because my husband was one of their first employees back in the early '90s. So we'd volunteered there, and then I ended up working for them. And for those who don't know his story, he was working, he was working, he was a priest at his church, and there were homeless people sleeping outside in cars. So he invited them into his church, and then he ended up making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for the homeless. And his work has expanded to, you know, now there's a multimillion-dollar, five-story building with affordable housing units, and that all kind of, a lot of that growth happened while I was working there. But it's been interesting to me. He is an amazing guy. He saw a need, and he stepped up to serve. But I've been interested in the parallels between my work on the school board and my work at the homeless shelter, interestingly. Because when we, when we're working with the homeless, we always said that we would try to meet the person at the point of need. So when you have a homeless person that comes presenting issues, they'll present a number of needs. So they might have mental health problems, and then they need housing, and they might need job training, or, you know, they don't have education. They have all these different needs. And if you meet one of those needs, say, you, you know, you get them housing, but you don't address the mental health issues, that person is not as able to move forward. And in the school system, with our system, we have, you know, 75%, almost 75% of students living in poverty. These children are coming to school with huge needs. You know, they've had trauma, these adverse childhood experiences that you're talking about. They have, you know, just a lot of flux in their lives. They're moving around a lot, a 35% mobility rate. And if we, when these children come in, if we just try to address one issue, you know, we're going to give them more math, and we're not meeting these other needs, then they can't move forward. So that's why I've been a huge proponent of these wraparound services and community schools. Because that is a way to address all the needs at once and better prepare them to focus on learning.
Let's go back to an issue that you talked about, which was excessive testing.
Yes.
Let's dig a little bit deeper in terms of where you're concerned as both a parent and as a school board member, and where you'd like the state and the district to take it next.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think anyone who's in the schools right now will tell you, there's just far too much testing. That was the first thing I noticed before I even got on the school board, because my daughter in 3rd grade had 23 different standardized tests. This past year, of course, the testing failed, but students were slated to take six to eight, I'm sorry, each school was slated to give six to eight weeks of standardized tests. And what's happening is that these tests are not being used to drive instruction. The teachers are often getting the results far after the test. This year, they were, you know, to receive their results in fall when they had different students in the classroom. And then there's some more foundational problems with the tests themselves. And we have to have some sort of measurement, so I'm certainly not against all testing. But there are basically two measures. One is achievement. And achievement measures pretty much just track socioeconomics. So the number-one factor impacting the test scores is the socioeconomic status of the child's family. And the second most important factor is socioeconomic status of the child's school. So, you know, really, you know, they're tracking wealth and affluence or poverty. And so that's not necessarily that helpful. So then we came up with these growth measures, which are, in theory, a better measure of performance. But the growth measure that we have value-added is a flawed measure, and I think everyone recognizes that. But it's a very volatile measure. And again, it's really not reliable enough to use in teacher evaluation. So that's one of our issues with teachers. But, so I think we have to take the test with a grain of salt, and they should not be the only measure of success for a school. I mean, they can be informative if they are actually driving instruction and if the teachers are involved in, you know, creating and using the test. But that's not happening now, and the state's spending millions of dollars of our tax money. And we're really, I don't think they're improving outcomes. But I think that's a larger conversation, and there are some recent changes in federal law. Hopefully, that will address some of our testing issues. I think, first and foremost, we have to decrease the number of tests. You know, students, we are, we are robbing students of the whole-child education I'm talking about. They, we're narrowing the curriculum to just the tested subjects. You know, teachers don't have time to do art and music. My daughter, for example, you know, they don't have, they didn't have recess at all in middle school, which was shocking to me, because they didn't have time, because they have to mandate, you know, the minutes for the testing. My daughter has to choose between art and band, which shouldn't be a choice. My daughter doesn't get regular PE, and this is all because of the testing. And then when I put in the teaching garden as a parent, we, the teachers were very excited. They wanted to use this, that we had a full curriculum to use with the garden. And they put in more testing, and the teachers, you know, abandoned the garden for a couple of years. And that's, you know, we need to be, we need to ensure that we are still instilling the joy of learning in students and allowing them to explore their interests and doing more than just, you know, teaching them how to fill in a bubble on a test.
You mentioned the changes in federal law. You're referring to the Every Student Succeeds Act.
Yes.
Which just passed and was signed into law. What are your hopes for what this law would be able to do for Tennessee and for Nashville?
Well, you know, I think it remains to be seen, you know, but I am cautiously optimistic. I think the law is going to grant local districts more autonomy. There'll be hopefully more local decision-making, which is very important because each district is unique, and we, you know, we're serving even different areas of the city. We're serving different students. That, you know, there's hope that it will decrease testing, standardized testing, much of which is not useful at this point. And, you know, I was reading about the focus on pre-K and the wraparound services. I think we are starting to have the right conversations about what's really impacting school and student performance. So I think it's, you know, this is a, could be a very positive change for our schools.
Good. Let's talk about the BEP lawsuit, the Basic Education Program lawsuit. The school board voted just, I think it was two weeks ago, to do this. What was your thinking behind that? And do you think it should have waited until after Dr. Joseph officially took office? Or what was, why did you vote yes on that?
Okay. Well, you know, so first of all, I will say, we've had ongoing discussions about school funding, because our schools are chronically underfunded by the state's own admission. The BEP was put into place in the early '90s, and it essentially has, other than a few years at the beginning, has never been properly funded. And so the, so the state has its own BEP review committee that makes recommendations. And for many years now, they have stated that our schools are underfunded. They are underfunded by, according to the state itself, its review committee, by about $500 million a year. That's probably a conservative estimate. It's probably closer to a billion a year. And so, and now we know that other, we have several other districts engaged in lawsuits over adequate school funding. Tennessee generally ranks around 49th in the nation on funding. I've heard, you know, depending on the source you reference, but it may be closer to 45th. But we're at the bottom of the barrel in funding, and we invest in what we care about. And I think education should be a priority. So instead of involving ourselves in the larger adequacy lawsuit, we focused on EL because we serve the largest percentage of EL students in the state. In Nashville, 1 in 4 students is struggling with language acquisition. And so that's a, it's a great need, and we always have to do what is best for students. And in this case, the state simply is not following its own law. It is not, you know, there's a clear law stating the ratios at which we should hire teachers and translators, or fund teachers and translators. And the state is not complying with that law. So to me, this was sort of a simple way to address student needs with clear, there's a clear mandate here. So it seems to me this is something that we can solve pretty quickly, simply by asking the state to follow its own mandates.
Very good. There's been conversation in the community, and you're aware of, in terms of just the way that people communicate with each other on social media, for example.
Right.
What is, what approaches have been used, and how do you see yourself using these approaches in the future in terms of the way that you yourself are communicating with folks, whether Facebook, Twitter, or other platforms?
Well, so I think, you know, social media has been very useful to those of us without a lot of political funding. I would not be elected but for social media. And when I ran four years ago, I was told, "Don't, you know, don't use Facebook. That doesn't work." But I ran a Facebook campaign because I didn't have a lot of funding. So it ended up being a true grassroots campaign. And I think social media has been useful in many ways because... And I think social media has been useful in many ways because it has allowed people like me to get the message out that I want to share. I've shared a lot of information, a lot of articles, you know, advocated for what I believe is in the best interest of our students, and that's all good. I do think that social media sometimes can devolve into a lot of negativity that's not helpful. And when we're talking about being in the box, you know, I think at this point, on some issues, people are just squared away in their boxes. So the more we're using social media just to reinforce the boxes, that's not helpful. But I do think that, you know, I'm going to try to continue to share information, and, you know, I think that, that's the part that's pretty useful to me as a, as a school board representative.
Now, I've noticed that you have an event coming up soon. Could you tell us a little bit about, I think it's a forum that you, that you've invited the community to?
The NOAA Forum, or the?
I'm trying to remember if it's related to the high school.
Oh, yes. We do have a high school meeting. We actually have several. I've got, so I've got the NOAA Forum, and I've got two Listen and Learns with Dr. Joseph, and then we have the high school. Yes. So we've had an ongoing discussion about what we should do with our high school, Hillwood High School. And had a series of five meetings last year on the topic. And we had narrowed down the options to either moving the high school to Bellevue or leaving it in its current location. And in the meantime, another option arose, and so we've sort of been in the vetting process for that third option for six months. And we're not really allowed to discuss it because it is a property owned by a church, and they hadn't told their congregation. And so they recently announced, their congregation, that they are now talking to us about possibly selling the property to Metro. So I'm excited to roll it out as a discussion for our community. The reason we are looking at Bellevue as an option, and it does make a lot of sense, is the majority of students from any one area are coming from Bellevue. The majority of school growth is in the Bellevue area. So we are looking at, you know, relocating the high school there. Again, for me, the focus is going to be what is best for the parents and the community, and how do we build community support for the school? Right now, a very limited number of children live near the current high school. There are only seven children within a one-and-a-half-mile radius of the school, and so, you know, we want to build excitement around the school, and that's, that's going to be my focus.
In terms of what you're looking ahead to, because we've touched a little bit about it in terms of the things we'd like to continue, the things we could change, if there's anything in the next four years that you'd really like to see happen, or a couple of one, two, three priorities that you have if you're re-elected, what would they be?
I think I've kind of touched on a lot of these, but I think, well, first of all, I will say, I think the conversation we're having, as I mentioned, around poverty and mobility and adverse childhood experiences is vitally important. And we need to build support throughout the city, and, you know, I think we have a mayor's office that's now focused on some of these issues, like affordable housing. We've got a lot of support from the council around these issues. And we need to, to, you know, Tom Ward, I think, at that event, was, said that if we're always responding to crisis, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to really make positive changes. And I, that's what the mentality needs to be, how do we build that support so that we're not in the school system constantly responding to crisis? The, and then the other areas, so I've talked a lot about this, but I'm going to continue to focus on whole-child education, not only because, you know, it's just good for children. You want children to explore their interests and, and grow and be excited about learning, but there is a lot of evidence that shows that whole-child education, even recess, physical activity, learning an instrument, those things improve student achievement. So it's important to boost our test scores, but also because it's the right thing to do. I'm going to continue to try to grow and improve our community schools. I think that's an immense possibility that, there's a, there's a, there's a, it's a great opportunity to partner with community resources, because, you know, we've done that with the academies, which have gotten national acclaim. There is an opportunity now for us to build these community schools in partnership with organizations in the city, with the government, with, you know, private organizations, with foundations, and volunteers.
So is there anything that we haven't touched on that you'd like to talk about?
Well, I will just, I guess I will just say that I think that my experiences, on-the-ground experiences as a public school parent and PTO parent at a Title I school, combined with my professional experience, which I actually didn't mention, I was a lawyer for many years and did a lot of legal research, and so I think that's helped me do the deep dives into education policy research to inform my decision-making. So I think the combination of my on-the-ground experience as a parent with my professional experience, you know, make me a good candidate for the school board. I think I've gained a lot of wisdom over the last four years, and so I hope that folks will consider voting for me. But also, I think I would just like to say that I hope that over the next four years, we will change the negative narrative around our schools. My children have had a phenomenal experience, a very rich, diverse experience in our local schools, and there are so many good things going on that are not getting celebrated. So I hope that we're able to build on success, and I hope that community members will be willing to step up and roll their sleeves up, whether or not you've got children in public schools, and support the schools. And I know you're going to ask about contact information, so if people want to contact me, I have a webpage, amyfrog.com. You can contact me through that. My phone number is 615-521-5650. It's also on the MNPS website, and I'm very active on social media, so you can usually reach me through Facebook or Twitter.
Very good. Ms. Frog, we want to thank you so much for your time. We think our audience on Facebook Live are certainly an audience that is going to be watching us later in the uploads on YouTube, and we'll have all the candidates. So Ms. Frog is the final candidate that we've spoken to in this cycle. Remember to register to vote. July 5th is the last day to register. July 15th is early voting, and August 4th is the election. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.